We are live to YouTube.
Shaw might be having just a minor technical issue, so we're just waiting for them to resolve that before we get going. Right, we are live on Shaw and YouTube. Welcome, bienvenue, Anin. I'd like to thank our media and broadcast partners who are covering tonight's meeting. Begin our meetings in a good way by acknowledging with respect that we are in Robinson here on treaty territory and that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Anishna Bay and known as Bawating. Bawating is home to Garden River First Nation, Batjwana First Nation, and the historic Sault Ste. Marie-Maitie Council. Madam Clerk?
Agenda item two, adoption of minutes. I have a motion by councilors Bruny and Gardi, resolve that the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 21st, 2024 be approved.
All in favor? That carries?
Agenda, agenda item four, declaration of pecuniary interest. I have a few matter, a few items. 4.1, Mayor Shoemaker declared for surplus property part of 330 Industrial Park Crescent, item 7.19, and associated bylaw. And I have councillor Caputo on the Tourism Development Fund applications, October 2024, which is item 7.9. And my apologies for Mayor Shoemaker was proposed purchaser's a client of the law firm and for councillor Caputo, a member of the organizing committee.
Counsel, any other declarations? Seeing none?
Agenda, item five, approve agendas presented. So I have a motion by councillors Vezo Allen and Gardi, resolve that the agenda for November 12th, 2024 city council meeting as and addendum number one, as presented be approved.
All in favor? That carries?
And that'll move us into agenda item 6.1. We have a presentation by Sault Ste. Marie Police Services.
Counsel, we are going to proceed into committee of the whole. Maybe we'll do the presentation first and then proceed into committee of the whole. What our hope is, is that we will, in committee of the whole, compile any questions that we've got as counsel and then leave them with the police services to respond to and get back to us before the budget meeting. Which, and are they slated, Madam Clerk, to present again? With the responses or are they being sent us? I'm trying to recall our scheduling there, Mr. Bear?
To you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is they're going to provide the information for the December 2nd.
For the December 2nd meeting, okay. So that'll be how we do it, counsel. They won't be answering the questions that we're compiling necessarily tonight unless they're real easy ones to answer. But the hope is we'll compile the questions and send them off to, for answers to get back to us before budget. So with that, Chair Bruno, Chief Stevenson, Ms. Davy, you've got the mic here at the center of the podium.
Well, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, through you to counsel. So we'll start off slide one. Couple of our budget highlights, 25. So we continue to roll out Division Two at 180 Brock Street. So the and, the annual ongoing costs are estimated around 430,000. That is an estimate for budget purposes. It could be lower than that. Hopefully it is. We also had the implementation of the new Community Safety and Policing Act, which replaced the Police Services Act of 1995. And the requirements of the CPSA have basically added about a mil to our budget with 96% of those costs being annualized in terms of training and FTEs. Our collective agreement increases. Our contract expires in 2026 of the 8.1. They're proposing 2% of that as salaries plus a 1% increase in benefits, which was bargained in good faith. Onto fiscal responsibilities. The board and I and Ange met in relation to the operating and capital budget, which is what we control as management. And we got it down from 5.92 to 2.68. And you can see the Consumer Price Index is 2% over the last 12 months. And the difference of 0.68 is what we had to account for in the new Community Police Act. So the new CSPA has put mandated requirements on firearms and training. They've changed the amount of training that we do for all officers, including special constables, which has increased significantly. It has also increased the transparency of policing through increased mechanisms, review police actions, adding additional investigative and legal costs. And finally, it has expanded the responsibilities of special constables to allow these roles to take on duties previously only provided by sworn officers. That can be prisoner escort, scene security, foot and bike patrols, duty officers, parades and services of penis. In discussions with the board and the mayor, we wanted to look at, well, where are all these officers going? If you look at the bottom graph on nonviolent, you'll see that property crime has remained statistically relatively equal over the last five years of 2019. I want to draw your attention to the violent crime. There's an increase of at least 16% between 19 and this time of October. Given that we have two or three more months of data coming into the system, we expect that to be around 18%. And why is that important? That's important because violent crime takes 10 times the amount of services that we offer as opposed to property crime. So we're talking homicides, attempt homicides, serious assaults and death investigations. And given that we have such a high opioid death rate in this city, you understand that every one of those deaths is a full investigation as to how they got the opioids in their system. Is there trafficking issues that we can look into? Is there criminal negligence issues we can look into in terms of the traffickers? If you look at the budget makeup, this is where the 8.19 comes from. Salaries and benefits, your collective agreement. 0.7% of the budget is what my command staff and the board can play with a little bit. We got it down to 0.7. And we had a revenue decrease of 1.09 due to two grants that came due in '24. We will be going back to see if we have additional revenue because this was a month and a half ago. And I think we're going to have good news for counsel at that time as well. So let's take a look at manpower costs. Division Two, our plan and our strategic plan was to hire seven additional in '25. You recall last year, we didn't hire the seven to keep the budget down. That was simply because attrition took up my OPC spots. This year, I can't hire seven, so I'm only going to hire three above complement simply because we don't have space at OPC. So as a result of the limits at OPC, which is currently 12, our current rate of attrition is expecting nine out of 15 that can leave in '25. So we're unable then to reflect those seven FTEs if I don't have space. So this budget that you're presented with today has three officers, three FTEs above our complement. With the introduction of NG 911, I think you're familiar in the city with it. You have it as well, I'm sure, in fire. There's a whole new added responsibility in labor of additional dispatchers. So now, when you contact the police, you can contact the police via text, via video, and that takes additional responsibilities in our comm center. I think you'll appreciate the fact that we have to answer the call, whether it becomes in from regular data sources being the telephone or now different alternative sources, which causes additional labor. The budget also reflects an additional increase in special constables where we're asking for three full-time and four part-time to allow for the added duties. Then I went over what those added duties are now. What that does is allows us to police a community where we would have had police officers doing it. Now we can have special constables which are paid a third less. So it increases our exposure, it increases where we can move officers, and it keeps officers available for true policing duties, which are 911 calls, etc. So just for you to take a peek at the difference in price between, you'll see basically the special constable is two-thirds of a full constable. And you can see the duties that are increased and you will see those folks out in the community with another officer, and that's what the legislation is to date. So the final slide is basically items of note that are coming in '25. So 2025 is the second year of our Axon product with in-car cameras now installed in the cruisers, as well as body worn cameras are being rolled out this month. This is a 10-year package that was approved by the board two years ago. We were able to finance it over 10 years, which gave us the opportunity to have the most advanced technology in our cars and on our members province-wide. Support for our members is important. Mental health, we've increased the safeguard assessments. The capacity for reintegration into the service after being on leave. And this new system is 25,000. Recruiting challenges are significant across the sector. There isn't a police service in Canada that doesn't struggle with simply trying to fill attrition, let alone dealing with increased demand. So as a result of that, we have an additional cost of 15,000. You'll see our recruiters. Out of the box initiatives is what we're looking at. We're going to a variety of different centers. Hockey games, different associations where young people, sports, education, to try and get those applicants. And I would challenge all of you in this room, if you have a friend or family member that is a police officer in a different community, have them phone our recruiting. It's a, it's a great decision all round. Optic JTS, there may be some hope on this $236,000 bill. There's eight services. We all went to cloud storage of our data, which is cheaper. A company called Oracle, and they had a relationship with Justice Technology Services. As a result of them footing a bigger bill, they felt it would be important to pass on to Justice Technology Services, who felt it would be important to pass on to the eight services. We are dealing with the ministry, the Assistant Deputy Minister. I'm on the Optic board. And we're hoping to see some relief for the eight services to eat that bill because technically no one expected it. At least all the participants to the agreement did not. Succession plan for our K-9 unit. We're in a position now where we're starting another process for K-9 selection. The cost of a new dog and training is approximately 120,000. And our revenues unfortunately decreased in '24 because, or '25 because they were one-time grants in '24. One thing I don't have up in your screen, and I apologize, it came in later. Angela did a review of all the, collect, all the increases to budget across the province. And the average that we have out of 16 services is 10.22. Be giving example, London, 9.8, Waterloo, 10.8, Windsor, 8.9, Peterborough, 8.8, which is the closest comparator. Niagara Falls, 15%, LaSalle, 11. Hamilton, 8, Sarnia, 9, Halton, 14. Peel, 21%, Sudbury, 6.24. And Durham, 17%. So the average of those 16 comes out to, based on my math skills, 10.22. And that's about it.
Madam Clerk?
I have a motion by councillors Vezo Allen and Gardi, resolve that the city council now proceed into the committee of the whole to consider the following matter referred to its first consideration, 2025 police budget.
All in favor? Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Got questions here? We're going to try and compile them, I suppose. Although if there's something easy that the chief can answer, I'm sure he will. Counselor Caputo first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wonder, we have heard that the CSPA has caused increased budget.
Yes.
But can you explain how? Like, it just kind of says that it does. What particularly and specifically is, is causing that increase now with the new act?
So for the training of special constables, now when we hire a special constable, it requires almost the same amount of training that we put into frontline constables. So of the 10 to 12 that we have on staff, all of them will have to go through additional training, annualized. We have change in weaponry that's required by the new act for specialized services. So the purchase and the training of those weaponry. The biggest chunk of that, though, councillor, is the additional part-time special constables and full-time special constables. So there's seven there. And the reason we have seven is based on the additional workload, which will include now scene security. So instead of having two or three officers at a crime scene, I can have one officer and two special constables. It's cheaper and it keeps the member available for calls for service.
So, so in the long term, this special constable thing should actually increase?
That's what we're trying to do. And you'll see that trend across Ontario.
And is the goal for a special constable to eventually become a full constable?
Well, I would never say that because I know my association's listening. But certainly there is.
Would it be the trend?
There's a trend for them to do more, but not take an officer's position. So really, you know, when you have a one-on-one sort of at a scene, that sort of works now. I can tell you there's a greater interest across the province, though. Pushing that envelope so that they can do more.
Okay. So you said that limits at OPC are a real hurdle for our service? Is that something that is being experienced across the province or is that just happening here?
Oh, no, no, that's across the province. So we all, I mean, they went to three classes. They used to only have two. So they went to three classes a year. And we're trying to fill those seats and they'll only give us three or four. The fourth, we have to sort of call in favors, so to speak, and say, we're really in need. So yes, it's across the province.
Okay. And if this is across the province, is there discussion of potentially like opening another OPC?
Yeah, actually. So two of the larger services are in negotiations to be able to handle their massive numbers to allow the small and medium services opportunities at OPC.
Okay. And then I just wanted to touch on the violent crime. The, that seems, that's a troubling trend. Is there a plan within the police service as to like how to bring that back down?
So, Counselor Caputo?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Just budget?
Yeah, just, sorry, just budget. That's an important question for sure. Your first question, I think, is one that needed, needs to be on the list. The rest of them have kind of been clarifications from there. And so if we can
Yep.
try and compile these questions
Okay.
opposed to
I wondered
the answer, Chief, but we'll try and get everything down.
Okay. I wondered if we could get, the chief's provided us with some comparators. I wondered if we could get some from northern municipalities because it's
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we tried. They're just not done, but as soon as they're done, I guarantee you that you'll have access to that.
And then I wondered about grants. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, here, let's, let's kind of take these one by one. Provide comparators to the greatest degree possible. And I'm looking at Madam Clerk here because she's taken these down from northern municipalities. I can tell you that Tom and I met with our northern counterparts and they're all, you know, if not providing their police budget already, very close to being able to. So I think the chief will be able to get that to us by the second. Without us, just, you know, without me just kind of telling Madam Clerk this, can we just have a quick show of hands that counsel's agreeable to this, that question? And we'll, we'll just do that very quickly on, on the questions to make sure it's consensus. Counselor Caputo, back to you.
And then I just wondered about grants and any grants that are available to the police service. Are those being applied for? And can we expect to see maybe any that would bring, bring this budget down in 2025?
Well, grants come out at funny times, but I can guarantee you as chief, Madam Councillor, through the mayor, that we will apply for everything that comes out and have. Unfortunately, the thing about grants is they're not forever. So you have to manage your staffing around that.
So I think if I'm understanding the question correctly, what we'll ask of the chief before December 2nd is are there grants that could alleviate the budget pressures in this budget year? Is everyone kind of agreeable to that? Quick show of hands? Yeah, okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Caputo. I've got councillor Vezo Allen next.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, and, and I'll be very direct and brief. I was doing comparable to your presentation in November 20th, 2023, last year, Chief. And the salary increase at that time in the budget was 5.42% with adding four to the complement, four full FTEs. This budget round, you're adding three officers, not including the specials, at 6.4%. So two questions. If we're not adding the, the amount of, like, we're adding less officers, but the increase is higher, what is the rationale of that? You also included in last year's presentation, how many percentage of officers that are off, that aren't doing active duty? In November 20th, 2023, it was 12.68%. So I think that would be a good piece of information for us as well when we're taking a look at, because policing is human capital. So that's our biggest cost. So kind of understanding that in terms, and this just
Before you go on there, councillor Vezo, and let's get those two down.
Yeah.
Clarification on the discrepancy on adding more officers last year at a lower percentage increase?
5.42 versus 6.4 this year. Correct.
This, Madison? Okay.
And as well, we were given a percentage of how many officers are off.
So what's the WSIB percentage this year?
Exactly. And then my
Is counsel generally agreeable to that? Yeah.
Two more questions. In terms of the approval from the board with Division Two at 180 Brock, I'm, I'm sure there was a budget and a, and a plan with that. What are the details of that? To make sure that it fits in within the scope of, of what police services are wanting to achieve with that location and what the costs are. I think that would be important for us to understand. And only one other thing.
So just before you move on, so is this a breakdown of the $430,000 operating?
And also, what was the original budget of that when they approved it?
Got you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Counsel? All good? Okay.
Okay. And then in terms of, because when the Community Policing Act came out, there was also a large fund that came out, which was the Community Safety and Policing Grant Program, which was over $270 million. And it was coming forth in multi-year from 2022 to 2025. Number one, did we apply for that grant? Were we successful or unsuccessful? And did you do a postmortem to find out why? And that's it.
Got that, Madam Clerk? Counselors, that, that seems, those all seem like reasonable questions. Okay.
Thanks.
Counselor Vezo Allen?
Thank you, Chief.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Chief. I just want to say you and your team have done a really great job once again in ensuring our safety. And I do commend that you and your team are very creative at looking at the best practices and implementing those in our own community. So thank you. My question is with regards to assets. I believe last year you're mentioning the current police station. And I understand from your presentation that we're looking at a new area in the downtown area. But I'm just want to know some of your concerns with your assets, especially your current building. And also, I'm worried that your fleet might be aging. And so just wondering if you have any comments on your aging fleet?
So this, we'll get to the budgetary question about the building and the budgetary question about the fleet. Just trying to refine that, councillor Hollingsworth, so we can get clear answer on what it is we're looking so we can get clear answer on what it is we're looking for. What is perhaps the state or the cost of the current building?
Correct.
And then is there any money in the budget to?
Any surprises that may come up in 2025?
Okay. With respect to the building?
Correct, the assets, yeah.
Or any amounts that are perhaps budgeted for the building that might not be there if there were newer assets?
Right. Because last year, it seemed like a big alarm that the aging building is going to be an issue sooner than later.
Okay. Is Council generally agreeable with that kind of flavor of question? It's not, not real crisp. But Ms. Davy or Chief, are you able to kind of generally get that information?
Well, that's a fair question, yes.
Okay. And then with respect to the fleet, Counselor Hollingsworth, age of the fleet and expected renewal dates?
Correct. Just like our public works fleet, we're always on top of it leasing with regards to make sure that we have the best vehicles. And I think it's a tool that our police officers must make sure that they have accessible and working to their best.
Perhaps a breakdown on the cost and the average age compared to other service of the fleet?
And if they're replacing any of the potential cars in the next.
Within this budget.
Correct.
Three, three things there you're able to get information on?
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk, I see you're writing vigorously here. Counselor Hollingsworth, anything else? Thank you. Counselor Spina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we talk about violent crime, just a quick question. I think the Chief can probably even answer this tonight. I think it's important for us to know when we're looking at the cost of violent crime because it is expensive to investigate. We know the number, the numbers have gone up. But the question would be, has the definition of violent crime, generally speaking, we're talking about seven-ish classifications of offenses. Has the definition of violent crime changed with the new act? Or is it the same definition from the previous act?
Very good question, and I can answer real quickly, Your Honor.
Yeah, you've given me a significant raise there.
I always go one up. But Sonny, good question. No, that's UCR information, Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics, which is Stat Canada. It hasn't changed significantly. So they define what's violent and we plug it in and give you those numbers, so.
Right. So it's not, it's not just a change in definition that has raised.
Oh, no.
This, it's actual, actual violent crime. I think that's an important thing that we have to look at when we're, when we're setting the budget. It's not a simple change in definition of, of a violent crime. It's actual violent crimes that they're, that they're dealing with. Yeah, and that would be it. I just wanted to make sure that we understood that distinction when we're, when we're looking at stuff.
I think Council generally agree, but we don't have to write that question down.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to bring that one back. I just think it's something important that we need to know.
Anything else, Counselor Spina?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Chief. Chief, you did speak about the recruiting challenges. Maybe in the report, the question is, what is police services doing for, to try to eliminate all the challenges in the recruiting process? Maybe you can, you know, send us a note on that if that's possible.
Council generally agreeable to that? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counselor Bruni?
No.
Any other councilors with questions? Counselor Dufour?
Good and sweet. If the Chief could bring us back with an update on the activation plan for the new downtown unit in Brock Street, some, maybe some deliverable dates, things the community can expect to see as that just becomes activated. Be great. Thank you.
The parking lot's in pretty good shape. But beyond that, it's not terribly clear. So yeah, Council's generally agreeable to that question? Yeah, okay. Got that, Madam Clerk? Any other councilors? Chief, in here, you've got four, three full-time special constables, four part-time special constables. I guess the question is somewhat broad, but is there any magic to those numbers? What's the difference if it's two and, and three as opposed to three and four? Can you provide us information on?
You can do that, and there may be an adjustment there.
Okay. And could, could there be, you know, what the cost for, for full-time, what the cost? Well, you've got that in there. But I guess, what does it, what does it do for your service to have three and four versus some other number? Thank you.
Now, and I forgot to ask.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, absolutely.
Good he said.
For sure.
I totally know that they're elaborate, that they need to be jotted down. Couple of things. One is, when it comes to special constables, Chief, do they attend some version of the OPC?
Yes.
They do? Okay, thanks. And?
If, if I could, so it's OPC has a curriculum and it's being offered by a variety of services. And right now, we're using the curriculum developed, I believe, by Sudbury to bring it home and do it in-house, but it's expensive. And as I indicated in my evidence, and Chief, the amount of training now that goes into a special is almost the same as a regular officer, given that they have additional responsibilities beside an officer. We can certainly provide that for you, sir.
And then through you, Mr. Mayor, one more question. You had mentioned special, somebody had asked a question, I think Counselor Caputo, about special constables eventually coming, becoming police officers in earnest. There's nothing precluding a special constable from applying to a regular police.
Well, actually.
Correct?
No, and, and most of our, I'm going to say 50% of our pool in the last year have come from the special constable ranks, so.
Yeah. Just a clarification on that point. You may be able to answer it here. Is the training that they get to be a special constable transferable to when they become a, oh, no, it's not?
No.
All right. Of course it's not.
No. It's a, yeah. They all have their separate certification processes, so you can't just roll one into the other.
Okay, thank you. Counselors Agordo?
I didn't initially have a question, but from what you raised, Mr. Mayor, just again, in terms of the number of officers, I'm just looking at the increase in dispatchers. If maybe we can get some information on the correlation or how is, or how are four dispatchers arrived at for the new demands on the NG 911? Just some, is that a mandate? Is that, you know, per something? Or is it based on something that, you know, is tangible? Put it that way.
Yeah, thank you. As Council generally, I think that's a reasonable question. Yeah, okay. Madam Clerk, you got that? Okay. Any other councilors? Okay. Seeing none, we will rise and, rise without reporting. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilors Dufour and Scott, resolve that the Committee of the whole Council now rise without reporting on the matter referred to it by City Council 2025 Police Budget.
All in favor? That carries. That brings us to consent.
And I have a motion by Councilors Dufour and Gardi, resolve that all the items listed under date November 12, 2024, Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda, Save and Accept, Agenda Items 7.5, 7.9, and 7.19 be approved as recommended, but we won't vote yet.
7.5, 7.?
9. And 7.19.
Okay, Council, items on consent. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Item 7.10, Sault Ste. Marie bid for Ontario Winter Games 2028. Through you, Mayor. I don't think Travis by, okay.
I'll answer questions.
Thank you.
Welcome to Council.
Thank you. This is very exciting. And I know that there's going to be a lot of pre-work. And I always like to be positive. And I know we're going to get this, but, and there'll be a lot of work at that time. Just a couple of questions. Our city will be the best for this in winter. First question, with regards to the whole process, when you apply to the process, do you have to basically, where's my question? Look at, oh, partnerships? Are we looking at partnerships with our other institutes in Sault Ste. Marie surrounding area like Hiawatha, Sioux College, Goma University, high schools and so forth? Is this going to be like a joint application? I would think that it would be a positive for us, highlighting the partnerships that we can bring into this, into this bid.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Absolutely. The city will be the lead in the bid, but we're reaching out to a variety of different organizations to partner with us in terms of letters of support and building capacity right now. The goal is to have the whole of our community represented in this bid.
Okay, excellent. And refresh my memory, have we bid on this before?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Yes, we bid unsuccessfully in 2018. We were beat out by Muskoka and at that time encouraged to rebid again. This will be the first formal bid that we've submitted since that time.
Okay. And do you mind me asking? This is wonderful that we're encouraged to be rebidding. That's a positive. And why did we miss out? Was it because of capacity accommodations? And how have we improved?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. There was a variety of different reasons. It was very close at the time. It came down to essentially the two communities. It was a capacity issue due to the volume of participants and coaches and families. Our hotel capacity at the time was limited. It still is to some extent. But we're being creative in how we're putting the bid forward, looking at some creative solutions to try and accommodate that.
Okay, two questions. Could we bring our partner in from Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan, and potentially use their accommodations if we're not quite there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is something that we looked at and we did include it in the bid the first time. And we will continue to include that. Being that the games are run by the provincial government, there is an effort to try and keep everybody on this side the best we can with the.
Of course.
Receiving.
Yeah.
However, if families do want to look at staying over on the Sault Michigan side, if there's a capacity issue, they're, they're welcome to do that. But all of the participants will be required to stay on the side.
Okay. Last and final question. We have an excellent infrastructure to house this. I, in my opinion, I don't think there's any infrastructure that we have to build or renovate for this that will be a surprise in a budget. Is there anything that we have to probably build or renovate for this to be a successful bid?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. No, we do have fantastic infrastructure. There are some upgrades that we will be looking at to try and position ourselves in a little stronger position. One of the areas that we know is our speed skating, for example. That is one area that we're, we need to look at some infrastructure there, whether we get creative using the Oval. There's some skills like that that we have to overcome, but nothing of any magnitude.
Okay. And just for the viewers at home, you submit the application, the bid. And when do you think we'll receive an answer to even say proceed to the next step?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. There, there's a fairly prescribed order of operations. So we will submit the bid by December of this year. We should find out early in the new year where the selection process goes. There's an opportunity for a site visit if we're shortlisted, and we should find out in the first quarter of the new year.
Okay. Thank you and good luck.
Other councilors on 7.19? Sorry. What? 7.10. Seeing none? Okay, Counselor Hollingsworth, thank you, Ms. Kenopic. Other items on consent, Counselor Hollingsworth?
I believe you polled 7.9, is that correct?
We did.
Okay. So no, there is not.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if I could speak a little bit to 7.2, correspondence for the HARTHUBs?
Yes?
So as I'm sure hopefully most people in our community now know, the city has submitted an application for what is probably the largest available funding envelope to combat the opioid epidemic that's ever been made available to municipalities in Ontario for not just the duration of our current term, but for the entirety of our last term as well. If, if there was ever a time for Sault Ste. Marie to make their case for actually having drug treatment options available in Sault Ste. Marie, now is the time and this is the case. We have here two letters, important letters that the mayor has written on our behalf to the MPP and to the Minister of Health. I think those are, are important letters to send and to write. It's important that they hear from the mayor. But in my opinion, I think it's also really important that these people hear from community members in Sault Ste. Marie that have been affected by the opioid crisis. That could be folks who have lost members of their family or loved ones to the opioid crisis. That could be people who are business owners who have been affected by some of the other symptoms of the opioid crisis. I think each and every person in our community who has been affected by this crisis needs to share their experiences with the people who are being tasked with making this important decision right now. If Sault Ste. Marie is ultimately judged unsuccessful or undeserving of this funding, we will continue to largely see the status quo in our community when it comes to access to the healthcare services that are needed to properly combat this epidemic. We will end up downloading the costs of dealing with these symptoms more and more, not just to the municipal services and the tax levy, but to the people who have to experience those costs with the decrease in their quality of life. And that is a substantial amount of people in our community that will be faced with that. So I bring this up to hopefully encourage more of us to reach out and to send this message loud and clear. I think it would be deemed significant for our application if these two individuals were met with a significant number of letters signed by individual Sault Ste. Marie residents to this effect. So I just want to take this time to encourage everyone to reach out. And Mr. Mayor, my, my only question is actually for you. I know that you circulated an excellent form letter through community partners for folks to sign and send in or email. Has that been shared publicly for folks in the community to also sign and send?
Yes, thanks, Counselor.
And could you share that information for viewers who are watching and who might want to also join their voices and the others?
Absolutely. So we, you know, thanks largely to suggestions made at Council. I know Counselor Gardi suggested this at a previous Council meeting. Counselor Dufour reinforcing that message right now. Other councilors, Counselor Caputo, you've shared it through your social media. I've seen there's a letter. You can find it on my Facebook, my Twitter, my Instagram, my website, MatthewSchumaker.ca as well. We'll link it on the city's website. As well, we'll link it on the city's website. It's a form letter to the minister, largely setting out what is in the letter on the agenda today about how Sault Ste. Marie has the highest level of opioid overdoses and deaths in the last two quarters. And it was circulated amongst community agencies. Hundreds have been sent in to the minister and the hope is that hundreds, if not thousands more, can be sent in to reinforce the message that not only is council behind this, not only are our partner agencies behind this, but the community is behind this application because without, as you said councillor Dufour, a significant change to what we're currently doing, we will continue to have the highest rates of opioid overdoses and deaths across Ontario. And we are not the biggest city in Ontario, to nobody's surprise, and so we should not be the top of the list for opioid overdoses and deaths. We are multiple times higher than the provincial average, as are our northern counterparts. So if you check the city's website, saultsteemarie.ca, my website, MatthewSchumaker.ca, my Facebook, my Instagram, or my Twitter. And if any of you councillors have social media, I know some of you do. If others do, please share the letter as anybody who wants to send one in to the minister can use it as a template or can write their own. And the minister's email address is Sylvia.Jones@Ontario.ca. That's S-Y-L-V-I-A.Jones@Ontario.ca. If you want to draft your own letter to her. Anything else councillor Dufour?
That's great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for sharing that. And once again, to anyone watching, please. I've been the receipt of many of these emails, a lot of the frustration, a lot of the concern over the years. Now is the time for us to amplify that to the voices of the people who can really make a tangible and meaningful difference in the quality of life for us here in Sault Ste. Marie. So please, everyone do that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dufour. Councillor Hollingsworth on seven point two? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Dufour for highlighting that. Your message is very clear and important. My question to you through you, Mayor, to me, Mr. Mayor, can you comment on our website? I think it's a great idea that on our website, a copy of that letter is placed. On our website, I haven't looked at it in the last few days, but is there a paragraph or a Q and A that actually explains the real benefit of the Hart Hub on our website? So people can educate themselves on the benefits of having this in our community. Include like a Q and A, because people have been asking me, what's the difference between this one and the wellness center? So is there an opportunity to put some education on it plus the template letter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Hollingsworth. Yes, we can have that background information there. We did bring a council report which had the information on the Hart Hub, so certainly we can pull from that report and put that on the website in a convenient spot.
I think that's great. That report that you did give us was excellent, but just having it on the website would just reinforce it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hollingsworth. Other councillors on seven two? Councillor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it really short. I very much appreciate the letter that you put together as a template and appreciate anybody who can send that out, but I personally have heard so many heart-wrenching personal stories about the opioid crisis and I would encourage anyone who is able to do so physically, emotionally, however, tweet your own stories forward to these ministers. It's one thing to copy and paste well-written letter from Mayor Shoemaker, but it's quite another for somebody to hear your own personal story, how you've lost someone or maybe a story of recovery, whatever it should be. But again, even if it's just in copy and paste, we appreciate anybody who can send it forward, but that's everything. Thank you.
Other councillors with questions on seven two? Councillor Gardy?
Yeah, just, could you reiterate when the decision is going to be ultimately? Do you have a sense of that?
I can't remember. I don't.
Mr. Mayor, to the best of your ability to project.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Gardy. The best, to the best of our understanding, we're looking at probably early in the new year that we would be hearing word. Because they do want the Hart Hub set up for operation in 2026.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to maybe the community at large, I'm not sure. And I'm kind of thinking aloud here, so hopefully I don't get any trouble. But to all of the points that have been mentioned already, and I'm not an expert at any of this stuff, considering I haven't been on social media in quite a while, with the exception of just reposting your post on Twitter a few seconds ago. I don't know if there's an opportunity not only to raise awareness by way of written letter or email, which was our initial kind of idea, but there might be an opportunity here to exploit social media for something good and maybe having some sort of social media campaign for it as well. So if you have social media and you read some information about what we're trying to do and you can speak to your personal experience and/or why you think generally we should be successful in this application. I don't think there's anything precluding anyone in the community from starting a little buzz on a social media platform or platforms. You know, initially, as I was thinking aloud here, I thought, you know, maybe it isn't the best light to put on our community that we're facing all of these challenges. But considering all of the challenges that we are facing as it relates to addictions and mental health in our community, we still have a pretty great place to live and to work and to raise a family. So I think we should be proud of that. Let people know that, but let them know that, you know, we're kind of stunted in a sense from achieving our full potential because we're just not getting the help from the provincial government and staff, and we have to. So maybe I'll leave that to somebody a little bit more adept than I. Councillor Spina is pretty good at that stuff. You, Mr. Mayor, councillor Caputo, but just a suggestion, maybe we can get the ball rolling on social media too, to really create a buzz here and do some stuff that other communities aren't doing. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Gardy. Good idea. Other councillors, questions or comments? Sorry, councillor Vezwell?
Just one suggestion to folks that are sending a letter to Minister Jones. It would also be a great idea if you copied the mayor's office because then we know how many letters are being sent and then we can track that. And I will certainly bring this up to my neighbors on Gore Street and the Social Equity Committee and a few other committees that I sit on to ensure that letters are going out and that the communication is going out. But if folks are comfortable copying on the mayor's office is a good idea because then we have some idea of the volume and then that gives us better knowledge and leverage in terms of lobbying for this to happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vezwell, an excellent suggestion as well. Other councillors, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Councillor Dufour, other items on consent? Other councillors with items on consent? Councillor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven point five, user fees?
Yeah, we've pulled it from
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Then no.
Okay, seeing none. We can have a vote on the consent agenda motion. It's been read. All in favor? That carries. Brings us to item seven point five. We've got a delegation request on this matter from Mr. Brown. So maybe we'll read the motion, Madam Clerk.
Oh, there is no motion. It's a bylaw.
Okay, so we, go ahead, Mr. Brown. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, fellow citizens, city staff, council members and Mayor Shoemaker. I want to thank the Agenda Review Committee for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to ask city council to not pass this motion. So just completely not do it, disregard it, toss it aside and keep the old user fees. In 2022, the user fee budget had a surplus of $1.5 million. And that led to a contribution to the citywide surplus of $5.1 million. In 2023, the user fee budget had a surplus of $2.9 million, leading to, as we've all heard, the $6.3 million surplus that city council used at its discretion. And this year, we're on track to get a, at least a $2.3 million budget. And staff can confirm that for you if you want to confirm that. So what does that mean? Well, it means that when this budget is in surplus, that every time you buy a hockey ticket to the Greyhounds, you're paying a little too much. And every time you buy a mausoleum for your loved one, you're paying a little too much. And every time you go to the roads to swim or have swimming lessons, you're paying too much. And if you buy a fire permit or a building permit, you're paying too much. With user fees, they're supposed to be on a cost recovery basis. So you're neither supposed to pay too much or too little. I mean, staff can't always hit the mark, but I mean, with those kinds of numbers, 6.7 million over three years in surplus. I mean, that's just way too much. It needs a serious look at. And so this increase, although city staff will say, because they're experts in, you know, finance, they'll say, well, you know, we want to keep things going the same. We need these, you know, inflationary increases to pay for gas, pay for insurance, that kind of thing. And it'll achieve a projected $212,000 increase. Well, that's because they're financial experts. They're not experts that are, have to deal with. They want to keep the corporation ruling. They're not experts like you guys are in dealing with people. We want to keep life as affordable as possible. And so that's your job and city staff will will tell you that, you know, it's very complicated. What Mr. Brown calls a user fee budget, it's not really that. It's called the fees. And he
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, questions on seven point five? I've got councillor Spina and councillor Caputo on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, probably to Michelle or perhaps Mr. Facy. When we do talk about, I'm going to talk about surpluses for a second. When we do talk about surpluses, and I believe I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask you folks. What result, what was it that caused our surplus? And from my understanding, a lot of that surplus came from the fact that we were unable to fill a lot of vacant positions, staffing positions. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. Yes, you are correct. The surplus that we had in 2023, a lot of it came from what you call vacancy gapping, being unable to fill those positions. There was other items that were one-time anomalies, such as higher interest rates on our investments, which we had. There was also another item that was a one-time item that related to a refund due to a change in our benefit carrier. Again, those will not be shown in 2025. We've adjusted because now we know that there was some estimates that were off. But none of the fees that Mr. Brown has alluded to have caused our surplus at any time. One thing that you can't do is just look at one line item on the budget and make assumptions as to what is happening. A lot of those fees, in particular, would be the sanitary fees, which we have a long-term forecast, which we set our fees based on what's required over the long term. You'll see surpluses in some years, but that will, you'll see those items go down going forward because the capital requirements are, like I said, a long-term forecast. I am going to turn this over to Mr. Facy. He provided a very good explanation for some of the key items that were questioned and he can provide further detail for you.
Welcome to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is correct that the user fees were in a surplus position for the year end of 2023 of $2.9 million. As Michelle alluded to, you can't look at things in isolation. The user fees, the user fees were in a surplus position, but there were offsetting transfers to owned funds, which negated the net, the net impact of the city. So for example, sanitary revenues, the higher revenue that we get from as a percentage of water revenues, there's a higher transfer to owned funds or transfer to reserve fund at the end of the year. Same thing with cemetery fees. If they were niche or crypt sales, there was an offsetting transfer to owned funds. So of that $2.9 million, I would think that approximately $800,000 contributed to the surplus for 2023. So that's, that's it for user fees in correlation to the 2023 surplus.
Thank you. So just I can seek a clarification on that. The 2.3 million or whatever it was that went from the sanitary surplus into the sanitary reserve. Why do we do that? Why do we have a surplus in that particular line item? What are we using a surplus for there?
So the surplus would derive from additional water revenues collected by PUC and we we recover a portion of those user fees of 80% of water rates. There's legislation that states that water and wastewater revenues can only be used for water and wastewater initiatives. So then it would go towards a reserve fund for future purposes of those funds.
Okay, which are?
There's biosaline investments, there's investments into our water and wastewater treatment plants. There's, I'm sure Carl has more examples of that, but pumping pump stations fleet for sanitary purposes, but that's the majority of the expenses, capital expenditures.
So if we didn't have a surplus in that line item, perhaps, Mr. Rumiel to you, what would be the consequence of that?
Through Mr. Mayor, we certainly wouldn't have money for unforeseen things that come up. Not just in wastewater treatment and pump stations, but also our linear infrastructure, like our pipes in the grounds. But definitely the biggest part, he hit all the, all the main, main points that these are for major future upgrades to treatment plants, pump stations, biosaline management facility, those types of things.
And so if we didn't have a surplus last year, and you know, I think Michelle said that there's a projection projected out on these things. What would happen when we have these big expenses, Michelle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If we did not smooth out the sanitary sewer rates, you would have ups and downs of the rates. So you could have significant expenditures projected, say in 2026, and we would have to request that we increase the sanitary fees to probably well over 100%, whereas as Mr. Facy stated, they're about 80% right now. If you recall, we did increase the rates, I think in 2024 was when we increased the sanitary rates based on our projections of what was needed for capital replacement as well as operational needs.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Spina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That clears up my questions on sanitary sewers. Thank you. So and through you, Mr. Mayor, to Michelle. So when we, when we set user fees, when we set the budget, when we talked a little bit about a lot of the surplus coming from the fact that we did not have staff to fill positions, we had a lot of vacant positions. Of course, that means a reduction in services to the community because those, those positions are not filled. When you create user fees or projected user fees and budgets, are you creating them with the notion that those, those positions would be filled or with the intent of having those positions filled?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Spina. It would be hard to state carte blanche for every area that that's the case. There's different areas that may not have user fees that are having issues with attracting, especially like in the public works area is a key one. So I don't think we've reduced services in areas where the user fees, which is predominantly in our C, S, C, D, E and S area. We have had increases in the users there. Again, the budget's very difficult to predict the amount of use. So we're always forecasting based on a quantity in order to cover. And another key point that I think we need to raise is that when we talk cost recovery, the majority of the services that we provide to, to the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie are not in a full cost recovery method. So a lot of them are subsidized through the tax base. Transit, arenas, especially ice time, all of that is subsidized. So when we increase the user fee, we are only trying to keep that balance between the tax levy and what the user is paying and as well try to keep it affordable. The departments all, all review comparators in their areas before they make a recommendation as well.
Right, thank you. And that was my next question was about that. So thank you for answering, thank you for answering that ahead of time. And you know, one of the things that I'm very cognizant of is any decision we make here at this table today has repercussions on the future, has repercussions on future council, just as past decisions have had repercussions on us here today. And we've had to make very difficult decisions, this council table, based on decisions that were made in the past. So I'm very reluctant to say do not raise user fees because at some point in the future, those fees are going to have to go up and perhaps not by minimal amounts, perhaps by large amounts, what we've heard here today. And I'm very reluctant for us to sit here and say, don't raise user fees today. However, set up a council in the future to have to raise user fees by 100% or 200% to catch up with what we decided on here today. I think what staff has, has asked us for here today or asked us to support here today is very reasonable. And I think it's equitable for our community and I, I'm happy to support it going forward because I think it's positioning our city for success in the future.
Thanks councillor Spina. Councillor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have some questions regarding transit. Because I see that there is an increase in the transit fees. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lamming. What is the increase to transit, like for a bus ride, a bus pass kind of thing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Caputo. For single adult rides going from $3.25 to $3.50, this is in alignment with inflation. And to put it in perspective, the budget last year in 2023 was $8.4 million deficit to the taxpayer. This year in 2024, we're now at 9.2 million. So there is, transit does operate at quite a deficit. So to keep in line, we do try to raise transit rates. We look at our northern comparators when we do that. And as inflation goes up, if it's not to that full quarter, we won't raise it that quarter until it gets to that amount. But it's at the year now where we raise it a quarter basis.
So in terms of like a dollar figure, So in terms of like a dollar figure, by raising this by 25 cents, what, what is transit hoping to increase by?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Caputo, from all the changes, as Mr. Facey stated, I believe it was 212,000 will be the net benefit of all, all the increases and CDS is only one component. But I think Mr. Facey has something to add.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, for transit in total, it'd be 120,000 if, if user fees increased with what's in the bylaw and what's being recommended to council this evening.
Okay. I just wonder if there's an appetite through council to discuss perhaps putting a halt on raising that user fee to transit, just given that a lot of the transit users tend to be some of our most vulnerable population. The bus also is contributing to, you know, making our city more green. The more people we can get to ride on the bus, the better. I just worry that, though it sounds like, you know, a small fee to us, I worry about raising fees for people who really may need these services.
Thank you, Counsel Caputo. Are you proposing an amendment?
I'm proposing an amendment.
Okay. So the amendment would be to remove the transit user fee increase. Is there a seconder for that? Okay, well, we'll have to see if there's a seconder before we can ask questions on that. You'll second it? Okay, Counsel Dufour. Question on the amendment, Counsel Dufour?
My actual question on seven point five, so I'm like lucky.
Feeding a little bit?
Yeah, a little bit. So just to follow up on Counsel Caputo's question. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lamming, if the global budget for transit is in a yearly deficit of eight to nine million dollars, do you know, and, and we heard from our presenter earlier that, you know, he was talking about a cost recovery basis for user fees. So do you have a sense of what a cost recovery basis would be for transit? So to be specific, if we took that $9 million deficit that sits on the tax levy and translated that into a cost recovery user fee, how much would each bus ride cost? Are we talking about like $16 a ride, $17 a ride?
Mr. Facey is going to use his calculator to trigger that.
Sorry, I, it's one of those that it's nicer if you ask in advance. I just, I want to get like, like have the proper context and sense. Like when we're talking about increasing the user fee for transit and surplus, it kind of makes it sound like the city's making money off of transit fees when in fact we're just losing slightly less. And the order of magnitude on those numbers is something I'm curious about.
Mr. Facey, were you able to extrapolate what the number is?
Uh, through Mr. Mayor, so right now our current subsidization is 73% on the tax levy. So that would mean, just give me a couple of minutes and I'll come up with something, yeah.
Yeah. We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Vezo Allen.
Thank you. I would be in support of this amendment if we include the report from the Transit Optimization Plan. So today at Accessibility Committee, Ms. Mayoni shared that we are in the midst of starting another consultation for a Transit Optimization Plan. So I would like the amendment to include based on, because lots came up, obviously at accessibility, because a lot of our folks with varying needs require public transit. So rather than just have a blanket no user fee, I would like the amending motion to not pass the user fee at this time and make recommendations based on the report from the Transit Optimization Plan that will be forthcoming in 2025.
Okay. Madam Clerk has clarified that we actually wouldn't be amending the user fee. We'd be sending the bylaw back to come back to us at the next meeting. What you're asking for is a little bit beyond the user fee scope, but perhaps it could, let's, let's think on that while Mr. Facey gives us his answer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just quick of the back of the napkin math. Rates would have to increase by 420%. So a cash fair would go from 350 to about 1470, just roughly. So each fee would go up by 420%, give or take.
Okay. Mr. Dufour or Counsel Dufour, sorry.
So I was really close. Yeah, so thank you for that information. So just to be clear, if we operated transit on a cost recovery basis, we'd be charging something in the neighborhood of $15 a ride. Obviously, we're not. The tax levy is supporting transit because this is a public good. This is an important public service, and this is something that our city needs to grow. My only other question to do with the amendment is my fear in, I, I, I do philosophically support Counsel Caputo's amendment. I do think that transit is a public good, and I do think that the affordability of transit is an investment that is worth making in our community because, you know, a dollar in the pocket of folks who are using transit, that, that's a dollar that's staying in our local economy somewhere. You know, and I do think that it is good policy to have affordable transit. What I would not want to see is as the subsidization rate goes up for transit, the level of investment from the city in transit operations stays stagnant or goes down because it's not being supported with a user fee increase. And so I'm just wondering if staff would be willing to give a bit of a thought or an opinion on that scenario. Probably through you to Mr. Lamming or Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. What I can say over the last six years is our average age of our fleet was 13 years. We've invested heavily, taking advantage of the ISIP program, bringing that average down to six years. Now we need to stay on top of it. And as Counsel Spina said, I'll kind of off script a bit here. Once upon a time, our user fees for our ice rates, we kept stagnant for a long time and we had to go through a reanalysis on that. And so we had to increase substantially in one year. So if we do not take some of these small increases over the years, it will end up in larger increases down the road.
Thanks, and that kind of confirms, you know, the ISIP program has been excellent in helping us reinvest in our fleet. It's made a huge difference. You know, we don't know if an ISIP program is going to be around forever. You know, we have a few more years of funding, which is great, but there may come a day when future investments in our transit operations may need to be partially supported by fair revenue. And with that, it, I do appreciate and understand the need to not have too large of a gap to make that. So thank you very much. My questions have been answered.
Thank you, Counsel Dufour. Counselor, I've kind of lost track, but Counsel Vezo Allen, did you have questions on the amendment specifically?
No, I just wanted to make that recommendation.
Counsel Bruni on the amendment?
Yeah.
As opposed to on the user fee bylaw generally?
Well, the question.
Specifically to transit?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Lamming. Mr. Lamming, 2024 fee was 325. Do you know what it costs 2023 and 2022, the last two years? Do you recall?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruni. I think Mr. Facey has that at hand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, 2023 was $3.20 and increased to 325 in 2024. So 1.5% increase.
Yeah. And to Mr. Facey, regarding the transit, the monthly pass for an adult is, it's increased by $2 from 77 to 79. And, and the monthly pass for the school board, it's $1 increase. And seniors is $1 increase and, and student, one, theirs is 75 cent increase. I don't think I'll be able to support Counsel Caputo's recommendation on this. It is a very minimal cost. We, it is a, a, a lost item in the sense that it's costing taxpayers quite a bit of money as now. So we need to collect something to offset our losses. Thanks.
Other counselors' questions on this transit question specifically? Go ahead, Counsel Hollingsworth.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Just add on to Counsel Bruni's question. We mentioned, you mentioned different increases. Do we still have the program in place where DSAB gives transit passes?
I, I don't know if that's really relevant to the user fee increase question, but.
It is, it really is because if there is, it could sway us from voting one way or the other. So please clarify, do we still have that? We do, Counsel?
Lamming?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth. We actually replaced that program with a social equity pass, so we do have that in place now.
Okay, and is that expiring anytime soon?
It is not.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
I believe the funding from the provincial government that DSAB was using to pay for these passes did come to an end. And we in turn introduced a social equity pass funded essentially by DSAB paying for passes to the city. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Yeah. Any other counselors' questions on this? I've got a question either from Mr. Facey or Ms. Shell or Mr. Lamming. The deficit for 2024 is 9.4 million?
Mr. Mayor, actually, Mr. Mayor, the deficit projected is 9.2 million. We're not at it yet because we're still in the year, but that's the projected deficit, yes.
I see, at December 31st of this year.
Correct.
What's the projected deficit for next year? Mr. Mayor is telling me it's 9.4 million as well. So if we don't increase the user fee, the deficit will actually be 9.5 or almost 9.6.
That's correct. The increase in user fees goes off at the additional increase in expenditures that we're.
Right.
Clarification, Counsel Caputo?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to let council know, I, I had a look and the Ontario Works basic needs. If you're on Ontario Works, your basic needs, what you get in a month is $733. So I realize it's really easy to talk about 25 cents at this table. You know, like it's just a quarter. But when you're looking at a basic needs budget of $733 a month, it does, 25 cents can make a big difference. And I just would really like to see more people, you know, giving these people the opportunity to get to work, to get to their doctor's appointments and to do so safely. So I, I really, I recognize and I appreciate everyone's points on this. I just think it's really important to recognize, you know, a lot of the folks that we're making decisions for here, they really are quite strapped at this time. So that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Caputo. For clarifications, I would come back to you for additional points of argument. Those are generally to be made in your presenting arguments. So I understand that this is going to affect people's ability to pay. But what I also know is, you know, to the point Counsel Spina made, that we are making decisions for future councils. If we don't raise it as recommended today, all it's going to do is increase the pain when it's raised 75 cents next time. And so I think that doing these things incrementally is the way to do it. And it's maybe more incremental than we'd like, but it's the recommendation based on a $9.4 million subsidy that's going to transit. It's going to go up to 9.6 million, which means that the taxes in the community are going to go up another $200,000 essentially to cover that shortfall. So one way or another, people are paying this. It's whether it's spread out across a bigger base or a user fee is increased, you know, within the rate of inflation to try and hit some level of balance. But the transit system is significantly subsidized. This increase is not going to change that in any real substantial way, but it will, I think, prevent future bigger increases that are going to be unmanageable for people. So as we can increase them in what I think is a unfortunate but reasonable way, I think we should. And I think we should accept the recommendation of, of staff on this particular point. So there's not really a motion to amend, or is there?
Oh, excuse me. So what I've done is I've put together a motion with Counsel Caputo and Counsel Dufour. And what I have is resolve that the transit user fees remain at the 2024 levels for the 2025 budget year and that the bylaw be brought back to a subsequent meeting. So that's if, if that's satisfactory to the mover and seconder.
So this, is that satisfactory as the mover and seconder? Okay, so if this passes, the user fee for transit will be referred back to staff. They'll come back to us at the next meeting with the full user fee bylaw. We'll still have the discussion tonight on the rest of the user fees. If it doesn't pass, we'll just move right into the discussion on the rest of the user fee bylaws now. So all.
I'll open it for voting.
Okay, we'll do a hand vote as well. All in favor of the amendment to take the user fee increase out? All opposed? That fails. So we are still in the user fee bylaw, but on kind of the broader.
Oh, I just, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
It was Counsel Kinnick, Counsel Vezo Allen, Counsel Dufour and Counsel Caputo in favor. One else opposed?
The vote has been closed.
Thank you.
And that's defeated, in case I didn't say that. On the general user fee bylaw, I think I was on you still, Counsel Spina. That's good, thank you. Counsel Caputo? Counsel Vezo Allen? Counselor Bruni? Any other counselors' questions on this bylaw? Okay, seeing none, I don't think there's a vote on it. We'll go to the vote on it on the, at the bylaw time. We will separate it from the consent on the bylaws though, so people can vote similarly. And that brings us to, thank you, Mr. Facey. That brings us to 7.9, which is accepted because of Counsel Caputo's conflict. Madam Clerk?
I have a motion by counselors Vezo Allen and Gardi resolve that the report of the Director of Tourism and Community Development dated November 12th, 2024 be received and that the recommendation of the Tourism Sioux St. Marie Board of Directors to allocate 37,000 as detailed below be approved. Gathering at the Rapids Powwow, 20,000. Dogs on Ice Hockey Tournament, 15,000. And Skate Ontario Provincial Series, 2,000. I'm opening it to vote.
Oh, no, we've got questions. Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Ms., oh, no, Mr. Ingram.
Ingram, welcome to counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can you just review at a high level the process? My main question with regards to the application, on the application, is there a question or an area where the group can state that they've had this event in the city more than once?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, to Counsel, yeah, absolutely, they can. We denote if the, if the event had happened in the year prior, if there was any tourism developing fund allocated to that event as well and what it was allocated to for the event.
Okay, so obviously it's a scoring process?
That's right. Every application goes through an internal matrix that staff evaluates. This is based on time of year, economic impact, and a myriad of different things through the matrix that helps us equate a dollar value to the fund itself.
Okay, and I read in your report that you looked at the positive impact on our economy. And you, if I read it correctly, a couple of the events looked at how many people were, I guess, coming and they multiply by an average dollar figure. What I don't understand is that how do you take into consideration if they've had an event in the past? Like, do you give them like, how do you score that into it? Or is it just?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor. No, inside in the matrix, it doesn't, it doesn't, there is a, a small section that adds, say, a bonus point to the matrix when it evaluates the event happened in the past. That being said, when you look at the matrix, That being said, when you look at the matrix, it, it, it doesn't hold a lot of weight through the evaluation. So we will take the final report from the year before and take that report into account when we're putting together our staff recommendation to our Tourism Board of Directors.
Okay. And on the application, is there a question where it asks if this event is going to be happening for the next X number of years as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor. Yeah, there, there are questions in regards to if the event is homegrown, if the event is bid on through the provincial body, if the event has plans to grow. And inside of that question for plans to grow, there are some delineations in regards to clarification on how it plans to grow.
Okay. And one final question, is there an appeal process if they feel like they want to submit their application again, knowing that their event is still a number of months away? Can they resubmit because they felt their application may have been missing significant information? And they re-submit?
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor. Usually the TDF process has a few pieces of embedded communication before it's sent to our Board of Directors. So although there's always room for communication and collaboration through Tourism Sault Ste. Marie, prior to their submission, there is a consultation process with, you know, our internal staff. Usually there's a very clear alignment between the application going through as well as staff's recommendation to our board.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Vezo Allen?
Thank you. I think they're all very worthy applicants and amounts. My only question, Mr. Ingram, is for the Docs on Ice. All of the charitable proceeds are going to be donated to our local United Way. What is the pro, is it through ticket sales? Do they do fundraising dinners? And in the past, what has been the sort of average fundraising amount for any of the Docs on Ice events?
Oh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezo Allen. The, the Docs on Ice revenue is generated through sponsorship and then team registrations as well as some one-off charitable opportunities such as, like you said, mixers and things along those lines that encourage those who are in attendance to donate through various means. But the majority of it is through sponsorship and those teams registering. As far as the general totals that they're being donated year over year, I would say based on our recent history with the COVID-19 pandemic, those numbers have been affected. So we don't have current data in the last, say, three to five years in regards to those. And unfortunately, I don't have the numbers in regards to previous donation amounts. It's just something we didn't gather in the last eight, five years with two canceled events and kind of reestablishing itself post-pandemic.
Hey, but even though there are people coming in from out of town, all the funds raised here are staying here for our local United Way.
I would, I would have to seek clarification of that. Do you? Yes, yes.
Clarifications sought and received.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Apologies.
Yeah.
Anyone else on 7.9? Just like to thank you first off, Mr. Ingram. And note that the Gathering at the Rapids Powwow is looking to become the largest Powwow in Ontario. We're second right now, so we trust that we will be first after this year. And hopefully the assistance of the Tourism Development Fund will help the gathering get there. So I know Sault Ste. Marie can do its part to make sure that we have the largest Gathering at the Rapids, or the story, the largest Powwow in all of Ontario. So that will be February. Let me just check the date here. Is it 15th?
15th, 16th, sir.
The GFL Memorial Gardens. So look forward to it.
Absolutely. In phenomenal hands and happy to be partnering with them.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel, vote is open. We'll ask for a vote on that matter by hand. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. That brings us to 719, which is the item I'm in conflict on. Counselor Scott?
There's no vote, but if.
Oh, unless there's a discussion.
Unless there's a question, yeah.
Go ahead. Counsel, any questions? Great. Yes, we can, we'll do with a hand vote. All in favor? Oh, we're not voting. Never mind. Right. We're done. I see that council's wishing the deputy mayor were the real mayor. That brings us to 9.1.
9.1. Agenda item 9.1, Chronic Homelessness, Mental Health, Safety and Addiction Crisis. I have a motion by Councilors Kinnick and Bruni. Whereas the chronic homelessness, mental health, safety and addictions crisis continues to escalate with at least 1,400 homeless encampments now present in Ontario communities, putting unsustainable pressure on municipalities and public spaces, creating a humanitarian crisis. And whereas housing, homelessness and healthcare, including access to appropriate and timely supports, are the responsibility of the provincial government and proper management of these issues is crucial to addressing the root causes of the humanitarian crisis that Ontario is facing. And whereas municipalities are being left to manage these issues without the necessary resources or legal authority to sufficiently respond, and as a result, are caught balancing the important needs of unsheltered people living in encampments with the responsibility to ensure communities are safe and vibrant places for all residents. And whereas the causes of homelessness can be complex and individually unique to each unhoused person, with one of the primary causes being undiagnosed and untreated mental health and addiction issues, which are difficult to address without specialized support systems providing a continuum of care. And whereas some individuals experiencing untreated or undiagnosed acute and/or chronic mental health or addictions challenges may be at higher risk to themselves and pose safety concerns for other members of the community. And whereas every individual deserves the opportunity for treatment and recovery, including crucial systemic resources, prompt access and appropriate intervention. And whereas Ontario Big City Mayors has launched SolveTheCrisis.ca, a campaign to raise awareness of the scale of the humanitarian crisis in our communities, seek partnerships with the federal and provincial governments to solve it, including a single responsible minister and ministry to coordinate action to solve the crisis, an action table with multi-sector stakeholders to create a comprehensive, made-in-Ontario solution that addresses these issues for all communities in the province, providing municipalities with the tools and resources to transition those in encampments to more appropriate supports, committing to fund the resources required, community by community, to fill existing gaps, invest in a sufficient number of 24/7 community hubs and crisis centers to relieve pressure on hospital emergency departments and first responders. And whereas Ontario Big City Mayors recommends the consideration of some specific tools and policy asks for municipalities and other sectors involved in the crisis as detailed below. And whereas an encounter with the criminal court system can be an effective pathway to treatment when the offender is offered a timely and effective treatment referral through a diversion court process. And whereas the province's plan to create 19 treatment hubs is a good step and has the potential to substantially improve access to treatment that can be referred through a diversion court process if these hubs are properly funded, accessible and expanded in scope and number based on community need. And whereas the ability of municipalities to ensure safe and vibrant communities is compromised by a double standard in our legal system that allows for the open consumption of illicit drugs, but prohibits the unrestricted consumption of tobacco or alcohol, causing confusion and undermining public health efforts. And whereas the ability of municipalities to make decisions regarding public safety is compromised by court decisions that enable encampments in public spaces and restrict municipal capacity to manage public lands effectively, including ensuring the safety of the people in those encampments and the community surrounding them. And whereas residents and business owners in neighborhoods where homeless encampments exist and drug users congregate are unreasonably impacted by social disruption, rising crime, vandalism and declining public confidence due to concerns for public safety. And whereas provincial and federal governments need to take responsibility for policy decisions that had led, that have led to this humanitarian crisis and must take on a greater leadership role in helping municipalities address the associated issues of social disruption and public safety. And whereas municipalities need clear, effective and enforceable legislative tools from provincial and federal governments regarding how to address encampments and social disruption and must have the legal authority to act swiftly and decisively when public safety is at risk. And whereas establishing and reinforcing principles and parameters at a provincial level will allow municipalities to focus on what they do best, providing services to members of the public without the impossible task of reconciling provincial and federal policy or various judicial decisions that are at odds with a group or individual rights. And whereas municipal governments must implement solutions that are efficient, effective, appropriate, feasible, practical and in compliance with Ontario and Canadian law while balancing individual rights with the safety and well-being of the broader community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Sault Ste. Marie endorse the request of Ontario Big City Mayors called to the federal and provincial governments through the Solve the Crisis campaign. Appoint one minister and ministry responsible for the humanitarian crisis Ontarians are facing and who has been provided appropriate authority and resources to find solutions. Create an action table of government representatives from all three levels, subject matter experts and those impacted by the crisis, including community partners, first responders and businesses who evaluate solutions to create a made-in-Ontario solution. And that both levels of government provide the funding required for municipalities, big and small, to put in place the solutions they need to end the crisis. And further, that the City of Sault Ste. Marie requests that the provincial and federal governments take on intervener status in the case of court decisions that restrict the ability of municipalities to regulate and prohibit encampments. Develop a fully funded and resourced range of compassionate care and treatment programs that strengthens the system of community-based and residential mental health and addictions treatments under the Mental Health Act and the Healthcare Consent Act, ensuring that individuals in need are able to access care and treatment in a timely manner. And urgently review, consult on and update the Mental Health Act and the Healthcare Consent Act to reflect the current realities of the crisis, including consultation with medical professionals, first responders and municipalities to determine whether to expand the scope, the scope of and strengthen the existing system of mandatory community-based and residential mental health and addictions care and treatment. And implement diversion courts throughout the province and expand the scope and reach of these courts by permitting referrals to the diversion court for provincial and municipal offenses with a focus on rehabilitation rather than punitive measures. And review, consult on and update the Trespasser Property Act to address the public safety issues municipalities are facing within their communities. With such a review to include but not be limited to options to assist communities in addressing aggressive or repetitive trespass. And to establish for municipalities a prescribed provincial priority of maintaining public order and public safety to allow in line with the above stronger local deterrence to offenses related to social disruption and public safety risks. And that the provincial and federal government introduce legislation prohibiting open and public use of illicit drugs and public intoxication, whether that be by consumption of alcohol or illicit drugs, with clear enforcement provisions and public awareness campaigns to reduce the harmful impact on communities. And that the province creates a blueprint along with associated funding programs for both federal and provincial governments to address the significant need for the quick build of supportive housing units, which includes units that address the specific needs of those who have started treatment and need shelter and care as they continue their recovery journey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Kinnick, you're the mover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendations in this motion came from the Ontario's Big City Mayor's Caucus meeting. I came across this resolution November 2nd while reading and keeping up with municipal news across Ontario. At the time, the resolution before us was passed in Windsor, Ontario, and similar drafts of this resolution were already passed in 11 municipalities, some of which are Barry, Cambridge, Guelph, St. Catharines and Sudbury. I believe this motion addresses many major concerns on chronic homelessness, mental health, safety and addictions crisis and gives clear directions and expectations. What we are doing right now is not working. The Sioux currently ranks first in the province for opioid toxicity death rate. And this cannot continue. We, as a council, have a responsibility to the community to explore all options and approaches to improve this humanitarian crisis. As of Sunday, November 10th, a total of 30 Ontario municipalities have passed motions and sent letters to Premier Doug Ford. I hope to find the same support here tonight at our council meeting and join the other 30 local councils calling for change. For everyone watching, more information about this motion and campaign can be found at SolveTheCrisis.ca. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnick. Counsel Bruni? Counsel Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about the motion. I'm wondering who I should address it to, whether it's Counsel Kinnick or just make it general?
Ask it. We can figure that.
Is this motion essentially asking us to endorse the use of the notwithstanding clause?
It's not. I read it, but Counsel Kinnick, do you see?
That is a good question because there has been some municipalities that strictly stated that in their motion. Or this one, I felt, does not strictly state that while touching on all the important issues that the community is facing here in the Sioux.
Okay, so support for this does not mean that our council is supporting the notwithstanding clause, the use of the notwithstanding clause. I just want to be very clear.
I did not read it to that, and I think Counsel Kinnick is saying that that's not his intention with the drafting of it.
Okay, I just read that the OBCM consideration or considering the use of specific tools. And so I just wanted to ensure I realize the 13 mayors have called and, you know, I just would, would like to be really clear about that part of it. That's all. But anybody else with questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel Caputo. Counsel Spina? You didn't, oh, you didn't have your hand up. Counsel Dufour?
Great. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, I'd just like to thank both of my council colleagues for bringing this motion forward from OBCM. I appreciate it. I think it's a really good motion. It's also representative of a continuation of some really good work that has been ongoing. I was lucky enough to play a role in the beginning of some of this work during my time on AMO when we issued our policy papers on encampments and opioids, of which this is a continuation of that work. And, and I did want to add as well with the Solve the Crisis campaign, when we were at AMO in August in Ottawa, I was actually approached by the staff member who's the executive director at OBCM, who was managing the Solve the Crisis campaign. And she, she came up to me at one of the events and said, like, what is going on in Sault Ste. Marie? And I said, what do you mean? She was like, we've received literally hundreds of submissions through Solve the Crisis that are specifically asking for targeted help in Sault Ste. Marie. She's like, what did you guys do? And so again, I want to like use that as a reiterative call. You know, we got noticed. That was a provincial-wide campaign. That campaign was shared across all of the municipalities that Counselor Kinnick mentioned. And the response from citizens expressing their views in Sault Ste. Marie brought it all the way up to the level of the executive director at OBCM. And if we can do the same thing with the heart hubs, which are also mentioned in this motion, I gotta believe it's gonna really do good things for our chances. So I thank Counsel Kinnick and Counsel Bruni for bringing this motion. Happy to support it and hope that it can be another jumping off point for Sault Ste. Marie to put their name on the map. So thanks very much.
Thanks, Counsel Dufour. Other counselors with questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? That carries from what I could tell unanimously. Clerk? Yes.
That will bring us to agenda item 12, the consideration and passing of bylaws. And I have a motion by Councilors Dufour and Gardi resolve that all bylaws under agenda item 12 of the agenda dated November 12th, 2024, save and accept bylaws 2024-159 and 2024-162 be approved.
All in favor? That carries. Can we do the user fee one next? And then?
And I have item 12.1.4, bylaw 2024-159, user fees. I have a motion by Councilors Dufour and Gardi resolve that bylaw 2024-159 being a.
a bylaw to establish user fees and service charges be passed in open council this 12th day of November 2024.
All in favor? Any opposed? That carries.
And moving to agenda item 12.1.6, I have a motion by councillors Dufour and Gardie, resolve that bylaw 2024-159, sorry, being 162, being a bylaw to declare the city owned properly, legally described as part of PIN 31561-0088, LTPTLT1, RCPH744, Territorious, PT1, 1R2002, E of Part 1, 1R4685, and E of PT4, 1R3484, except Part 1, 1R9652, PT1, 14, 1R4681, PT1 and 2, 148856, Sault Ste Marie, subject to an easement over PT1, 1R12214, in favor of PTLT7, RCPH744, PT1, 1R7067, and LT6, RPCH744, as in AL110117, being a portion of 330 Industrial Park Crescent as surplus the city's needs and to authorize the disposition of the said property to the abutting owner be passed in open council this 12th day of November 2024.
I feel bad just saying this.
Okay, that's great. And close that unanimous, other than Mayor Shoemaker on account of his conflict. Which will move us into the closed session motion, agenda item 14. I have a motion by councillors Vezo Allen and Gardie. Resolve that this council move into closed session to discuss the security of the property of the municipality and one item to, related to the security of the property of the municipality, and four items concerning the proposed disposition of land. Further, be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? And that carries.
And agenda item 15, adjournment, I have a motion by councillors Vezo Allen and, while you're up here, I'm going to move to councillor Spina. Motion by councillors Vezo Allen and Spina, resolve that this council now adjourn?
Right, all in favor?